All right, I've got six o'clock, so at six o'clock, I call this meeting in Saginaw City Council to order. Please rise for the pledges.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you. Please be seated. Item number two is the invocation. I do not see anyone here from the Crossword Rhodes Church. Anyone in the council want to volunteer to do the invocation? Anybody?
I'd be happy to.
All right, thank you, Mr. Farr. Please pray with me.
Our most gracious and heavenly Father, thank you for the opportunity to serve the community. Father, thank you for the privilege that we have in this nation to exercise our right to vote and to choose our leaders. Father, pray that there's safety and peace brought to those who are suffering in Tennessee with the tornadoes that blew through there last night. Father, be with this council tonight. Help us to make wise decisions for the folks here in our community. It's in Christ's name we pray. Amen.
Thank you, Patrick. Well done. Item three is the honor participation that's covered on the screen. If there's an item you would like to speak out, please go to the city secretary. She will sign you up. Also, please silence your devices, cell phones, et cetera, so we can have a peaceful meeting. If you do need to make a call, please exit our chambers. Item four, the consent agenda. A is action regarding minutes February 18th. B, action regarding building improvement grant for Julian and Lambert. C, action regarding resolution 2020.07, continued participation in steering committee of the cities served by Encore. D, action regarding proposal for radio marketing partnership with 95.9 The Ranch and 92.1 Hank FM for 2020 Saginaw training grant. E is action regarding ordinance 2020.05 cancelling the May 2 election. F, action regarding rejection of bids for finished mowing grounds work at city parks. G, action regarding retail retention recruitment and development services proposal with the retail coach. I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I ask that we pull item B for separate actions so that I may abstain from that vote.
B?
B.
Okay. Anybody else?
I'd like to pull F.
F, okay. We will pull B and F. Therefore, I will seek a motion on A, C, D, E, and G.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve consent agenda items A, C, D, G, and E.
All those in favor, raise your right hand. All those opposed? Let the record reflect, we do have a quorum. We have a full house this evening. All right, so item B. Item B is action regarding building improvement grant with Julian and Lambert professional photography. Keith, you want to give us a quick one on this?
Thank you, Mayor and council. At the February 18th, council meeting, executive session, presented to you a building improvement grant by the Julian and Lambert Professional Photography Studios. They've moved, they're a Saginaw business, for one. They've moved from the southern end of Saginaw to 100 South Hampshire Street Building or Suite 200. They were requesting funding to do some improvements, and they ended up doing about over $30,000 worth of improvements themselves. This was part of the building improvement grant program that they were requesting funds to assist with that.
Good. Mr. Farr, you want to abstain?
Yes.
Okay. Any other questions on this item? If not, I will entertain a motion to approve for B.
Mayor, I make a motion that we approve action B, our agenda B.
I'll second.
All those in favor, raise your right hand. All those opposed? All those abstaining? Excellent. Now, moving on to item number G, right? No, F, I'm sorry. F, action regarding rejection of bids for finished mowing grounds made in city parks. For that, Director of Public Works Rick Rice.
Yes, I think it's pretty self-explanatory. We received two bids on this contract, and they were about, I don't know, $40,000, $50,000 over our budget. So, we hoped to advertise to get more participation. One of the contractors' experience in equipment list was inadequate, really, we believe, for the job, and then the other one was just so much higher than our budgeted amount. So, we think we may have more luck with some marketing and rebidding the project.
Okay. Cindy, do you have a question?
I do. I know in the past that, you know, we said it was too expensive for us to do it as a city, but I mean, since the bids are so much higher, I figured it was about $40,000, $50,000 higher than last year, or last time. I mean, is it worth considering us hiring part-time people to do this task rather than sending it out for bids?
The only issue is that it's so seasonal that you would have that additional overhead to carry over an entire year's period versus, you know, a four or five month period. So, if we had work that those employees could perform during the off-season, the winter months, et cetera, that might make more sense, but really, it makes a lot more sense because of liability, insurance, et cetera, et cetera, just to contract that out on a seasonal basis.
But I mean, we're talking a huge price difference. I mean, if this happens again, I mean, we have seasonal employees at the recreation center for the pool in the summertime. I mean, it might be worth considering again.
We can look at it again. We'll evaluate when the bids come in again. But again, I mean, you've got a capital cost also of, you know, increasing your equipment for mowing, et cetera. I mean, we have a fleet of mowers in-house, but not anything that's what's required for the mowing that this contract will accomplish.
I'd like to see a comparison of what it would cost to do that, if you don't mind.
Sure.
Okay. Thank you.
So, this is budgeted 160, so we're hoping the next round of bids will come in closer to that. That's sort of...
We're hoping, and then it might be time to reconsider that budget.
Yeah, that's what it sounds like as well.
Yeah.
All right, any other questions? Not, I'll entertain a motion on for F.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve consent agenda item for F as presented.
I'll second.
All those in favor, raise your right hand. All those opposed? Thank you. Thank you, Rick. Moving forward, item F, presentation of 2019 Texas Achievement and Library Excellence Award for that city manager, Gabe Bray.
Mayor and council, it's always nice to be recognized, and Ellen and library staff have received the Library Excellence Award, the state level, again. So, one of the things that makes me happy to be here is when I talk to people about our city. I was in Haslett a few months ago and had a park with one of my daughter's soccer practice. We were talking about where we live, and I said, "I live in Saginaw." And they said, "They have a great library in Saginaw." So, there's libraries everywhere. It's not the four walls and the books that make the place. It's the people that care very much about the people that they serve and the good programs that they provide. So, with that, I'd like to call Ellen and staff up, and she could talk a little bit more about the award, and we can recognize them.
Well, I don't have much to say. Just thank you. We couldn't get awards like this or do the things we do if we didn't have support from every level, not only our other city departments, but our volunteers and supporters like the Saginaw Library Boosters, the library board, the city council. I mean, we have support from every side. And we even have a special treat tonight. We brought some of our teen advisory board with us today. Yes, did you? They just had their meeting, so they came over. So, these are volunteers who help guide our teen programs.
For that, Chris Carruthers, the Dallas Regional Census Center.
They give suggestions and stuff like that.
Is he not here?
So, y'all will come up here, and we can get a picture.
Well, then we will move forward. We'll catch him next time.
Yeah?
We're just going to count people, right?
I do have a very nice plaque to present the group, so... I hope we count a lot of people.
Oh, sorry.
Okay.
We also have staff members, Pam and Debbie.
Item seven, community involvement presentation, the Camelot Square Apartments.
We have Judy, who's one of our ESL tutors, and volunteers.
For that, city council member Cindy Big Horse. Thank you, Cindy.
Did I miss somebody?
Hi, everybody.
Oh, and Erica, yes.
I just want to brag on Saginaw a little bit.
Soon to be staff member.
I did, too.
In September of 2017, one of the residents from Camelot Square Apartments came up to me
I had to cancel out this vote.
and asked me to stop the sale of the apartment complex. It was being sold to a market value corporation. Obviously, we're not able to do that, but we did go to the USDA that held the loan and found out what we could do to help the residents. So, we were able to clear up some of the misinformation that was being distributed. The residents found out they did not have to leave in four months and vacate their homes, that they could stay throughout their lease, and until the sale was complete, they could continue to renew their leases. So, that made them very happy. The USDA stepped in and said, you know, they did an investigation, they had a ruling from the judge saying that there were, since there were 15,000 families in 2018 that were on a waiting list for subsidized housing in Tarrant County alone, that the owners of Camelot Apartments would have to try to sell to someone else that would honor income-based housing. They were not able to find anyone, so they protested the judgment, and were able to buy the residents a few more months to stay in their apartments. And in May of 2019, the apartment sold. The city of Saginaw and the residents stepped up to help these residents. 125 families were affected by this sale, and there were over, well over 100 people in the city of Saginaw, whether it was individuals, churches, civic organizations, that stepped up. They volunteered their time, their trailers, their trucks, their muscle, their kids, their finances, to help these people move. And over the summer last year, we were able to move over 40 disabled and/or senior citizens into brand-new homes. And here's a picture of Ms. Gloria. She was 89 years old, and, oh my gosh, she was so happy to move into her brand-new place. She's in her pajamas still because she stayed up till 4:00 in the morning and fell asleep working, and her movers came in at 7:00 a.m., so she didn't bother to change. She figured by the time she got settled into her new place, she was going back to bed anyway. But it was just an amazing thing to watch, you know. Former city council member had moved to California. She sent a gift card to help feed the volunteers. Two women specifically, Carol Nahuleva and Sissy Fiero, were just remarkable for finding homes. They called senior living apartments, and they said, "Okay, you have a unit for my family. How many more do you have available?" And they went immediately back to Camelot and said, "Okay, we got nine units at this place," and they had me call this place, and this one has five. So, they were able to find homes for people pretty quick. Several of the churches in Saginaw stepped up and did their part, but I have to give credit to Renovate Church and the Church of Latter Day Saints. They were there almost every weekend. They were at a last-minute call, you could count on them to come move somebody else over those summer months. And I think my most enjoyable moment was that one early Saturday morning when the Pentecostal Church, the Mormons and the Baptists worked together to get four families moved over. You know, all of our differences were set aside for this one mission to get people moved into their homes. And I have never been to a place, I've never lived in any city like Saginaw where there was so much compassion for their neighbors. Even the USDA said, the director said, "This is the first time in his 25 years in that agency that any city has ever stepped up to help its residents like this." I also want to recognize the city of Saginaw for their selfless acts, because at the last minute, these residents had to send in paperwork as soon as the sale was done to get on letters of priority so they would get ahead on the waiting list. They faxed, I don't know how many, applications for these residents. They set up, Keith set up a database for volunteers. They offered meeting spaces. It was just absolutely remarkable. Saginaw is really, after this almost three-year event, two-and-a-half-year event, is truly the most remarkable place in the United States to live. So, thank you, city of Saginaw, and thank you, council and the residents, for all that you've done.
Cindy's a little too humble. I would like to thank Cindy. This wouldn't have happened without her. She was a passionate driving force for this, and I appreciate, but the citizens really appreciate it, Cindy, so well done. Great job, Cindy.
Couldn't have done it by myself.
Thank you. All right, moving to number eight. Action, item number eight, consideration action regarding resolution 2020.08 declaring intention to reimburse an amount not to exceed 8.5 million for certain capital expenditures. For that, city manager Gabe Bray.
Mayor and council, the resolution for your action this evening is an intent to reimburse, which means the six projects that we talked about at our last meeting, we will begin relatively soon, and in the summer, we will plan to issue bonds and pay ourselves back with bond proceeds for these particular projects. Bond council's here, Clark Kimble, if there's any questions about the actual resolution. One of the items, in fact, it's our next item, is to start design on Knolls, so we intend to get going quickly on the projects that we talked about at our last meeting, and I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Counsel questions? Patrick?
I just want to make sure that citizens understand that what we're essentially doing is we're taking advantage of a bond market that is getting harder and harder. As the stock market does what it did today, and as interest rates move in the downward position, interest rates have a tendency to push bond rates up. So, we want to take advantage of this quickly while we're still in a favorable bond market. And one thing that I'd like to clarify, or have Gabe, if you can clarify this for me, we do need to establish a timeline to have these projects, this $8.5 million spent, since we are going to be reimbursing it with bond proceeds this summer. It's something that we need to burn off quickly and spend the money, and not just sit on it and not spend the money. So, if you can circle back at the time we're going to be issuing the bond debt with a timeline that we intend to execute the work, that would be very helpful for me at that point in time. This is addressing a number of things in our city. Two of these are preemptive to the bond issue itself that we're going to the taxpayers to make a decision on sometime in November, or actually, I think, November the 5th. Is that Election Day this year? So, on November the 5th, that's going to tackle the fire station. It's going to tackle the Knolls projects. The rest of these are projects that were not listed by the bond committee, but they're critical to the success of our cities and moving vehicles around and people around. So, I think it's a great list. I think it's a project list worthy of this reimbursement effort. Thank you very much, Gabe, and your entire team for putting this together and getting it here.
So, when do we think, if we approve this, when do we think we'd come back with a, to approve the bonds?
So, the certificates of obligation require 45-day notification period. That's correct. Always good to make the attorneys happy, acknowledge them. But, and Bryn can actually defer. He can say, "Hey, ask the bond guy." But, so, we can't actually issue the bonds now because it's depending on values that we won't know until we have our certified tax roll in July or so. So, the actual issuance won't be until the summer. But our intent with this next item, the other items, to get design moving quickly. One of the projects we identified was sidewalk work, so all things, you know, hopefully within the next several months, we can get going.
It's mostly those things we can move on rather quickly, and that's what we talked about. So, just to reiterate, since we didn't mention this, the projects we're talking about specifically are the Knolls Drive reconstruction design, the central fire station design, construction documents, North Old Decatur design and reconstruction, sidewalk ADA improvements, Bowes Old Decatur intersection improvements, and Saginaw Boulevard signal synchronization upgrade. So, that's specifically the issues we talked about. So, any other questions? If not, I will entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve the intent to reimburse.
I'll second.
All those in favor, raise your right hand. All those opposed? All right. Thank you, Gabe. Thank you. Moving forward, item number nine, certain action regarding individual project order with Kimley Horn and Associates for Knolls Drive. For that, Rick Rice, Director of Public Works.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mayor, city council. On the 18th, I course presented the projects that we just discussed. This is the first one coming back to you. This will complete the IPO work required for full design of the project. The way the IPO is structured is to do design and construction in four phases, but again, the way the IPO is structured, we can get economy of scale by combining some of those depending on how utilities clear, et cetera, and design progresses. The four phases are shown there. One thing we would point out that Phase Three is West McElroy Boulevard to Longhorn was really not within the limits that was discussed as a bond project. I think I mentioned that in my presentation also. So, we would probably defer that work to the last, just to give us the most flexibility as bond discussions and project scoping continues to be discussed among the council and the community, so...
We'd still design.
Still design it, and it'd be on the shelf.
It'd be ready, yeah.
We would put it on the back burner as far as priorities. Again, some of the special services has to do with bidding services, construction phase services. You can get economy of scale by combining some of that work like I've just described. If you've got any questions, I'd be glad to try to answer those.
Counsel questions? Questions for Rick or any Kimley Horn VIPs that are here?
Yep.
Yes, Mary.
I had asked Rick a question earlier about whether or not sidewalks would be included on the Knolls project, and the intention right now, I believe, is to include sidewalks where the residential areas are, but not where the park is. And I would just like to put a good word in for including them where the, just where the park is, because people have to walk in the grass near the park, you know, and it can be kind of dangerous if there's cars coming on either side. There was a woman walking there this afternoon who walks in the park all the time, and she has a real pronounced limp, and she's elderly, and so she was walking, you know, in the grass. So, I just think it would be great if we could include that and just have it, you know, consider that.
Their sidewalks are part of the way, right? Not the entire way?
This is, I was driving north on Knolls from, turned from McElroy going north on Knolls.
Okay.
And she was walking on the right-hand side, and it was grass.
Maybe between the end of the park and Bowes or so, is that where you're talking? Are you talking on the...
She's talking on this side of the street.
She's talking about on the east side.
On the east side.
Wouldn't that be considered the residential area?
Well, there are sections of it that there are no streets going into residential. So, if that's considered residential, that's great.
So, just to clarify, and on the east side of Knolls, between McElroy and Bowes, there is not a sidewalk, and I think what we're counting on is a sidewalk that's inside of the residential area. But I personally have heard a lot of requests to get a sidewalk on Knolls on the east side, just to make it convenient for people who are leaving that subdivision to access the park.
Isn't that varnish kind of big? It would have to be graded when they do the work. It won't be a varnish anymore.
So, we can put that on our list to take a look at? Excellent. Other questions? Let's move. This is a great project. I'm excited. I want to get this done. I want to fix a lot along there on Knolls.
Get it done.
All right. Any other questions, council? If not, I will entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we put Kimley Horn to work.
And I'll second that. Get her done.
All those in favor, raise your right hand. All those opposed? All right. Thank you. Good luck. All right, moving on to item number 10, correction action regarding a management agreement with Community Link Mission for the operation and promotion of a farmer's market at Saginaw Switch Yard. For that, city manager Gabe Bray.
Mayor and council, happy to bring this proposal before you for action. So, our farmer's market slash food truck park area is nearing completion soon. The Parks Board met, I believe, in December maybe to discuss the name for this area, and the recommendation from the Parks Board was to name it the Switch Yard. So, that's where that comes from, which is pretty neat. The agreement is to have Community Link act as the manager and operator to actually program the farmer's market piece. So, the terms of the agreement, which are in your packet, they would operate 14 weekends between April and November. We would require that they have no more than 50% non-food vendors. There's some language in the agreement about not having used items for sale, so we don't want this space to be a, you know, a big garage sale. We will pay them $30,000 for primarily marketing purposes and branding to get it up and going. This is an eligible expense, eligible use for our hotel occupancy tax. So, there's also a neat, and our friends from Community Link are here, can speak to the details, there's a neat opportunity, my understanding with people who receive SNAP benefits, that they can use that to purchase fresh food. So, I think that's a really positive thing for the community, and we're really excited to get that space active and going and bring a lot of people that come in and have fun and get some healthy food and use those pavilions that are almost completed.
And I know there's some brain trust here from Community Link. Would one of y'all like to come up and entertain us?
Hello, I'm Trey Harper, the Director of Development at Community Link. We were approached several months ago with the possibility of this opportunity. It fits in our mission of showing God's love, providing food and other resources. It's a creative way to provide food. We indeed can work out a system of accepting SNAP benefits and doing a system, but it does take a lot of startup, so the first year it may not happen, it may happen in the second year. In your packet, do they have a budget? You have the full budget. Community Link is very fiscally conservative, so each number has been thought about. We operate very conservatively, so you can see that there. We have a vendor guide in place, which will give stipulations to what type of vendor is there. As Gabe said, 50% has to be food, but we're also not allowing MLM, multi-level marketing will not have a space there, so it'll have to be local handmade type of items. There will be a webpage that someone will apply. There'll also be sponsorship opportunities for other community businesses to get some name recognition and publicity around this project as well. Are there any questions?
So, all the proceeds are going to go to Community Link and not the city, even on the, after the city paid for the sheds and everything?
And we're looking at $40 of proceeds.
For the rent, when somebody rents those?
For like total income, $40.
So, instead of the city having a staff person program and run it, Community Link will do that, and it's...
Well, I get that part, but I was thinking, since the taxpayers paid for it, the city's not going to get anything back on it. That's what I'm asking.
Yeah, I don't know that the intent of the farmer's market food truck space was to generate revenue. I think it was to provide a quality of life amenity, which is to have the farmer's market available, so that's why this is before you.
I didn't know that.
Other questions?
Just, is there a possibility to parlay this into even the food truck offerings? I mean, just thinking out loud, it's another creative way in which you guys could serve. I mean, I could envision you having a Community Link mobile kitchen. is there. As Gabe said, 50% has to be food. But we're also not allowing MLM, multi-level marketing, will not have a space there. So, it'll have to be local handmade type of items. There will be a webpage that someone will apply. There'll also be sponsorship opportunities from, for other community businesses to get some name recognition and publicity around this project as well. Are there any questions?
So, all the proceeds are going to go to Community Link and not the city, even on the, after the city paid for the sheds and everything?
And we're looking at $40 of proceeds.
For the rent, when somebody rents those?
For like total income, $40.
So, so instead of the city having a staff person program and run it, Community Link will do that, and it's?
Well, I get that part, but I was thinking, since the taxpayers paid for it, the city's not going to get anything back on it, is what I'm asking.
Yeah, I, I don't know that the intent of the farmer's market food truck space was to generate revenue. I think it was to provide a quality of life amenity, which is to have the farmer's market available. So, that's why this is before you.
Other questions? Just, is there a possibility to parlay this into even the food truck offerings? I mean, just thinking out loud, it's another creative way in which you guys could serve. I mean, I, I could envision you having a Community Link mobile kitchen.
Sure.
That shows up out there and serves food at very low cost or something along those lines for folks.
That would definitely be something we would be interested in exploring. You know, that's, there's an expense associated with that that we can't imagine right now, I don't think, but we would definitely love to explore something like that.
Sure. And it's just, I'm just thinking about all the opportunities that exist now with that space.
Absolutely.
That would be another opportunity.
Yeah, we're excited about it.
Great. Love it.
I think that's going to bring a sense of community to the park even more so, that folks will come out on a beautiful day and, you know, walk and shop and get some fresh food. I think it'll be a nice draw, and it's just, again, it's a quality of life thing. We didn't do this to make millions of dollars for the city. We did it as a service to the, to the citizens, as a positive service. And I'm glad Community Link is offering to step up, because I don't want to run it. I don't want to sit down. Sorry. But, oh, it's great. So, any other questions for Trey?
Mr. Mayor, just one note. So, on the weekends when Community, should you approve, Community Link wouldn't be operating, the space would be available for rentals, just like any other space we have. So, that may generate some revenue for the city. Just a project update while we're, while we're on the topic. I believe the last pieces are the stage that's under construction. We've talked about, we already have regulations and a permitting process in place for the food trucks, so we hope to get a calendar of sorts live, so that people can book, so long as they have a permit with us, they have a valid Tarrant County health permit, that sort of thing, so we can tell the public what, you know, which food truck is going to be available on what days. So, if Rick could answer.
Yeah, I just want to add, by the end of this week, we should have all the elements complete, with the exception of the stage, which is going to be a future element, actually. But we, we have stubbed out power to, to provide power to a stage and then a permanent sign that we will have. For the grand opening, we anticipate we'll have a banner of some form. So, I, I think after this week is complete, we'll confirm everything's done, and then we can schedule a grand opening.
We're going to start first weekend in April. What's the plan for start?
Gabe and I and Keith have talked about that, probably doing one big grand opening event as soon as they're ready and, and we're in place.
All right. Awesome. Yes, Cindy?
I was going to ask you to kind of reiterate what you said. Are we, do we have a ballpark date that we're looking at rather than soon?
Yeah, probably within a month or so, April. We'll set a grand opening date pretty soon. So, don't want to commit to anything yet, but the actual work is almost complete.
Excellent. Thank you.
Any questions for Trey? Thank you, sir.
Somebody?
Oh, it's Keith, I'm sorry.
I was just going to add something real quick about the food truck park and the pavilions there and the stage that'll be put in. One of the intentions was, as you know, we have our concerts in the park that we have at the large pavilion, Willow Creek Pavilion, and the intention was to move our concerts down to that location right where the, the food truck park is, so.
That's great. No, thank you. Thank you, Trey. All right, any other questions? I will entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve the management agreement with Community Link Mission.
I second.
Charlie, second. All those in favor, raise your right hand? All those opposed? Excellent. Thank y'all. Let's get busy. All right, moving forward, item number 11. Consideration Action Regarding Resolution 2020.09, Adopting the Fiscal Year 2019-20 Annual Strategic Plan, Project List, and Work Plan. For that, City Manager Gabriel.
Mayor and Council, this is just a simple list of projects that you've seen a time or two before. Intent is for the council to take action. I will come back with a memo with some timelines and action points specific to each of these projects. So, many of these projects are related to future bond efforts, and with design contracts and other things that'll be coming your way soon, I'll be able to commit to, or we'll be able to get you a general schedule. So, one that pops in my head is, I believe, the next meeting or meeting after that, we'll have a IPO for a Parks Master Plan Update, which addresses parks issues, trail system, ADA improvements, that sort of thing. So, this is the project list. If you're good with the list, then we'll come back and, and put some dates together.
Council questions? No, it looks good. We're making, making progress. Thank you, Gabe. Things are putting together. Let's, let's move forward. Then, oh, we have a resolution, so I will entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve Resolution Number 2020.09, the project's list as presented.
Charlie, second. All those in favor? All those opposed? Excellent. All right, making some progress. Item 12. Consideration Action Regarding an Interlocal Agreement with Tarrant County Governing County Game Room Regulations Permitting and Enforcement. For that, City Manager Gabriel.
Mayor, I may defer to you and City Attorney here. Minor standing that Tarrant County has adopted some regulations that affect game rooms or gambling type establishments. Thankfully, I don't believe we have any of these type establishments active in our city currently. Should we adopt these regulations, we'd kind of be ahead of the matter. In your packet, Bryn prepared a memo that had some comments regarding the interlocal from the county. If there's any specific comments Bryn would like to add or you would like to add.
I'll briefly give some background. This came up through the Tarrant County Mayor's Council. It was brought to my attention that Tarrant County had this new regulation that was going in, in effect in April. So, asked some questions. You know, we don't have this in our, our city now, but we'd want to get ahead of this. But other cities do. So, asking them how they dealt with it. So, I, we've seen ordinance from Everman and some other folks that have ordinance already. So, I asked Gabe and Bryn, I said, "Let's see what we can do, what would be wise," thinking that, you know, the county's really going to take a look at this, they're going to regulate this, but how can we really get ahead of the curve on this? So, that's what brought this about. I'm hoping that we don't have to deal with this, but in case we do, we'll be prepared. So, Bryn sent us out a memo, and I'd like you to sort of speak to that, because it's some complex legal issues.
Certainly, yes. I, I sent out quite a number of documents for you all to digest. And on the one hand, there's a lot of background material and a lot of legal issues with the various statutes in the Constitution, et cetera. But on the other hand, the, the interlocal agreement, just in and of itself, is rather straightforward. So, we would not be adopting any regulations. The interlocal agreement would allow the city of Saginaw to essentially be an agent of the county for purposes of their regulations, to the extent that they apply within our territorial limits. But the county's regulations will apply countywide. So, just to give you a little bit of background on this, the city of Fort Worth is currently engaged in some litigation over the legality of their particular regulations governing game rooms. And just, just so you all know, none of this addresses illegal gambling. That's still illegal. None of this affects that. The common wisdom, as I understand it, and PD might be able to speak to this better than I can, is that these eight-liner establishments can be a haven for other illegal activity. And they may also have some, the ability to convert these machines to illicit and illegal gambling machines. A illegal, an illegal gambling machine is any machine that awards you a prize of more than 10 times, in value, more than 10 times what you put into it per play, or $5, comma, whichever is less. Okay? So, that's typically $5. That's called the fuzzy animal exception. That's intended to allow Chuck E. Cheese and Dave and Buster's to operate without everyone going to jail. So, what, what the city of Fort Worth has done is, they've decided that these eight-liner establishments that are purporting to operate as fuzzy animal exception, you know, game rooms, that really aren't attracting any kids, frankly, that they are a nuisance and a problem because of the secondary criminal aspects of these businesses traditionally. So, they've adopted their own set of regulations governing the location and the registration of these businesses. Well, these businesses have taken offense to this, and they've argued that the Texas Occupations Code, which has a, a requirement, and it speaks to zoning, that it essentially says that cities, under their zoning regulations, may not treat these businesses that have these lawful gaming devices. Again, unlawful gaming devices, always prohibited. That you cannot treat these establishments any differently in your, under your zoning ordinance than you would a similar type of business that does not have these establishments. So, if it's a bar or a restaurant, you have to zone it, and they're allowed, anywhere a bar or restaurant is allowed. Other than, and except in circumstances where these businesses that have these lawful gaming machines are located within 300 feet of a church, school, or hospital. Well, what Fort Worth has done is, they've established a thousand-foot setback. They've said, "This is a carve-out. We're a home rule municipality. We're allowed to adopt anything that we're not otherwise preempted from adopting." And also, by the way, the Constitution prohibits lotteries in general, unless you meet one of the exceptions in the Constitution, which are only for charitable purposes. So, the city of Fort Worth is also arguing before the Texas Supreme Court that, who cares what the Occupations Code says or the Penal Code with the fuzzy animal exception? They're all unconstitutional anyway, and the legislature cannot adopt a law or a permission that is otherwise prohibited by the Constitution. So, that's still being litigated. I, I don't know the motivation that prompted Tarrant County to take advantage of some authority that counties have in the local government code that cities do not. But again, the argument is, if you're a home rule city, you don't need authority. Counties like general law cities need authority to act, but they do have express authority. So, they're not subject to an argument that there's implied preemption or that there's Occupations Code zoning preemption. This is not a zoning entitlement. This is a, a direct enactment of authority for counties to promulgate regulations regarding the permitting, licensing, and enforcement and setbacks, okay, of lawful game room establishments. And in order to be a game room establishment, you have to have six or more of these devices that award you prizes that meet the fuzzy animal exception value, okay? So, the county has expressed statutory authority to restrict the location of these establishments so that they are not within 1,500 feet from any existing or planned school, regular place of religious worship, and/or residential neighborhoods. And to restrict the location of these game rooms so that they are not closer than 2,000 feet from any other existing game room. And the county's regulations are set to be, become effective on April 1st. So, the counties, the county adopted 26 pages of regulations that involve registration, permitting, inspection. They provide for a Class A misdemeanor for violating any aspect of the regulations, and also take advantage of the statutory authority for counties to assess civil penalties of $10,000 per violation, okay? What the interlocal agreement says is, cities in Tarrant County, if you don't want to risk litigation and the arguments associated with whether you have the authority or not, we will allow you to be our agent for purposes of the permitting, inspection, revocation, and appeals process, essentially all the administrative side. We already have authority to do the criminal enforcement, law enforcement does anyway. But one of the, the issues that I point out, that the agreement seems to suggest that they could delegate us the authority to, to perform, is the assessment of civil penalties. Well, the statute does not give cities the authority to issue civil penalties. So, in, in my opinion, we would not inherit the ability to assess $10,000 a day civil penalties, just the authority to do the registration, inspection, permitting, and any revocation appeals. What that would earn us is firsthand knowledge of where these game rooms are in the city, plus $1,000 per application. And in exchange, we would be doing inspections, any revocations. We would be defending any appeals of any revocations. And you, we would need to follow up with some sort of ordinance or resolution, delegating and deciding how the, the inspection process and permitting process would be administered within the city. And then, the agreement contemplates designating the city manager as the, the appellate body, the, the person to whom appeals would be filed for purposes of denial of a permit application or an appeal. So, that's everything in a very short synopsis. Again, we're not adopting any regulations. The question is, and I, and I suggested to Gabe that he, he should certainly have this conversation with the police department. Is this necessary? If we don't enter into this agreement, the application of the county's regulations will apply to the city of Saginaw. It's just that applicants that want to operate these game rooms will go to the county for their permit and inspection and pay the $1,000 to the county rather than to the city. So, with that, I'm happy to entertain any questions.
So, where we sit today, zoning-wise, where could these potential game rooms go?
I think they could go in any commercially zoned property, but with the setbacks that the county has outlined. I mean, we, we have several schools in our eight square miles of real estate, so it would be pretty tough, I think, to locate one with between 1,500, 2,000 feet, but.
Yeah, just thinking geographically, where they could go.
Yeah. And they'd have to come in pretty quickly. If they could establish prior to April 1st, then obviously, this, the county setbacks would not apply.
I see. Okay. All right, Council questions? Mayor?
First, I understand why I'm not an attorney. I understood every word of that, of course.
Good.
Not. So, it would not be to our advantage to have a specific use permit for such a use?
Well, if, if we, so the Occupations Code says that we cannot treat these game rooms any differently than their underlying business purpose. So, if they were a restaurant or a bar, we can only require an SUP if in that zoning district, a restaurant or a bar would require an SUP in order to operate.
So, it would depend where they were wanting to locate?
And what the underlying business, principal business use would be. If it were a gas station with six eight-liners, wherever a gas station is allowed and how a gas station is allowed, is how they would operate.
Okay. Thank you.
Other questions? All right, thank you, Bryn.
Thank you.
I hope we don't have to deal with this, but we'll be as prepared as we can if this comes up, so I appreciate the work, I appreciate the background work, Bryn. I think it's a good thing to get ahead of this and at least understand what we're dealing with, especially the impact of the county, because whether we like it or not, that's going to happen, so we need to be able to deal with it. And I think this is the best way. So, all that being said, we'll entertain a motion on this agreement.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve the interlocal agreement with Tarrant County governing the county game room regulations permitting and enforcement within the city limits.
I second.
Charlie, second. All those in favor, raise your right hand? All those opposed? Excellent. Thank you, Bryn. Thanks, Gabe. All right, we're at the end. What do you know? And I don't believe we have an executive session, do we?
No.
Hallelujah. Entertainer motion due adjourned. Move adjourned. Second, all those in favor? 6:48.